Hello, welcome to the January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five Regular Meeting, Reorganization Meeting of the North Gibson School Corporation Board of Trustees. It's the intent of the North Gibson School Board and Administration to conduct an informative, open meeting concerning the business of education in our school corporation. For our patrons, we have two designated times established during the regular board session for patron statements. The first is established at the beginning of the meeting for patron statements specific to agenda items. The second opportunity for patron statements is established at the end of the meeting agenda and is for patron statements that are not related to agenda items. School patrons who wish to address the board may do so during the agenda items, agenda times designated to hear patron concerns. We will not discuss in open session any individual, school student, or school employee and/or descriptions of such people, which leave little doubt as to the identity of these people. Myself will be, I will be available following this meeting as well as the Board President to discuss any concerns that are presented this evening. At this time, if you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to our agenda item for patron statements on agenda items. Patrons who wish to address the board, again at this time, it is just regarding agenda items only. Comments are limited to specific agenda items. Patrons wishing to address the board on items that are not specific to the agenda this evening may do so at the end of the meeting in the section, Agenda Item, for patron statements that are not agenda item related. We will not, again, we will not discuss or allow discussion in open session of any individual school student or school employee or descriptions of such people, which leave little doubt as to the identity of these people. Per board policy, we also may limit comments to three minutes. So at this time, we will open the microphone for any patron statements on our agenda items this evening. If you would please state your name and...
Sure. My name is Shayna Holmes-Linder, and I'd like to make a statement with what, one of the topics on the agenda items tonight.
Okay, what agenda item topic would that be?
Board President.
Okay.
My name is Shayna Holmes-Linder, and I have been a longstanding resident and taxpayer in Princeton. While living here, my daughter has attended school in Princeton North Gibson System. First, I would like to acknowledge the excellent work of the outgoing Board President Travis Noel Cox. Putting aside politics, he consistently met with the public, respected their comments, and got along with and was respected by others with their concerns needed to be addressed. Working with the public isn't an easy task, and it takes a strong commitment, a willingness to work well with others, and a trust that can only be fulfilled by someone who has earned a leadership role. All of this was said to say that this board needs to continue forward with strong leadership in order to effectively guide the governorship needed to support the staff, the kids, parents, and public with what is best. That is why I would like to highlight Amy Bingham. Amy is one who has been fair, trustworthy, and a pillar on the school board. Watching her in public, it has been noted that she cares how the school is represented, shows strong character, works well with others in the school, and will work well with the public. She isn't intimidated by addressing the questions and adheres to her beliefs in making strong relationships. This school, this public, this taxpayer, along with others, would be honored to have Amy Bingham be our next Board President. That is why I would like the board to take the wants, wishes, and needs of the people to consider this request when accepting and making nominations. Amy has shown exemplary standards that would make this school board proud to have her as a Board President. Now I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I look forward to hearing your nominations.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments regarding specific agenda items this evening?
I'd like to say thank you. That was very nice of you. I have been on the board six years, and I, I really appreciate your kind words.
Okay, so we will move on to Agenda Item Number Five, which is Election of Officers. As we did in previous years, we will do these nominations individually. So we will do President followed by Vice President followed by Secretary as individual items this evening. So we will begin, and we will open the floor for nominations for the election of President of the Board.
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Beth Davis.
Okay, so we have a nomination of Beth Davis. Do we have any other nominations this evening?
I'd like to nominate Mike Ice.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mike Ice.
I'd like to nominate Joe Williams.
We have a nomination of Joe Williams. Any other nominations this evening? So as a review, we have a nomination of Beth Davis, nomination of Mike Ice, and a nomination of Joe Williams. So we will call for a roll call vote here. You will simply state who you are casting your vote for, for President, and a simple majority for President will carry the presidency. We can take a, there was no, no motion, I don't believe there is a requirement for a second, or to close the nomination, but we can do that if the board would choose to do so.
You can certainly move to close the nomination. It doesn't sound like any are forthcoming, and as such, it would come to a natural close, and I think that's allowed by Roberts rules.
Are we in favor of moving forward to vote, or do we want a motion and a second to close the nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close nominations for President.
Okay.
Second motion.
Okay, do we need to take a vote on that?
I think you can do a simple voice vote. I'm IRNA, and Noah could probably call for that.
Okay.
Mrs. Bingham.
Vote to, we're voting to close nominations.
I mean, I don't, I don't get it. I mean, we gotta nominate.
It's saying we're done with nominations, so...
Oh, okay, I get you now. I was like, okay, yeah, yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Ice.
Yes.
Mr. Severs.
I got, he's there.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Okay, now we will call, roll call vote for casting the name of the individual you are voting for President individually.
Okay, Mrs. Bingham.
Why do I gotta go first? Beth.
Mrs. Davis.
Joe.
Mr. Ice.
Beth.
Mr. Severs.
Joe.
Mr. Williams.
Joe.
Joe Williams, elected President, three votes to two.
Okay. Mr. Bellhaus, you need a few moments to record that and the action taken before we move on to Vice President.
Yeah, if you would give me just a minute, I would appreciate that.
Okay. of Vice President of the Board. We will open at this time for nominations for Vice President.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Amy Bingham for Vice President.
Okay, we have nomination of Amy Bingham. Do we have any other nominations for Vice President?
Mr. Superintendent, I would like to nominate Brock Severs as Vice President.
We have nomination of Brock Severs for Vice President. Any other nominations?
I nominate Beth, Vice President.
We have nomination of Beth Davis for Vice President. Any other nominations at this time? If not, a motion to close nominations.
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Ice and a second from Mr. Severs to close nominations. Mr. Bellhaus, at this time, we will need a vote for closing the nominations.
Closing nominations. Mrs. Bingham.
Beth.
Yep, vote to close.
Oh, sorry, close, yes. Sorry.
All right, Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Se, Mr. Ice.
Yes.
Mr. Severs.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we will have Mr. Bellhaus call for your voice vote for the individual you would like to see as President of the Board for twenty twenty-five, or Vice President of the Board. My apologies.
All right, votes for Vice President. We'll start with Mrs. Bingham.
Beth.
Mrs. Davis.
Brock.
Mr. Ice.
Beth.
Mr. Severs.
Brock.
And Mr. Williams.
Brock.
Okay, Mr. Severs is elected Vice President, three votes to two.
Okay, we'll give Mr. Bellhaus a moment to record that. We're going to move on to election of Secretary of the Board.
I nominate Mike Ice as Secretary.
Okay, we have nomination of Mike Ice for Secretary. Any other nominations?
I would nominate Beth.
We have nomination of Beth Davis. Any other nominations? Do we have a motion to close nominations for Secretary?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Ice and a second by Amy Bingham.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote on closing nominations. Mrs. Bingham.
Mike Ice.
We're closing.
Oh, sorry.
Vote to close.
I do that every time. Yes.
You're jumping ahead of us, that's okay, you're right.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Ice.
Yes.
Mr. Severs.
Yes.
And Mr. Williams.
Close it.
All right, motion to close carries unanimously.
Okay, at this time, we'll have Mr. Bellhaus call for voice vote, naming individually each Board Member, naming your vote for Secretary of the Board.
Okay, vote for Secretary, Mrs. Bingham.
Mike Ice.
All right, Mrs. Davis.
Beth.
And Mr. Ice.
Beth Davis.
Mr. Severs.
Beth Davis.
Joe Williams.
Beth Davis.
All right, and Mrs. Davis, as elected Secretary, vote four to one.
All right, so we have elected Joe Williams as President, we have elected Brock Severs as Vice President, and Beth Davis as Secretary of the Board for twenty twenty-five. So at this time, I'm going to turn over running the meeting and the agenda to our new President, Joe Williams.
Well, thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for cheering us up to this point, and thank you to the Board for the confidence they proposed in me in electing me as President for the coming year. I'll do my best to fulfill that role and serve our community well. So, up next on the agenda, Item Number Six, Regular Meeting Dates for the Coming Year. Currently, the Board's meeting on the third Monday of every month, with regular sessions set at six thirty and executive sessions as needed.
Just a reminder, there is one exception in the next six months, so you've got kind of a schedule here for up till June. Again, I give you, after, in May or June, I will give you July through December because that's budget season, so we have special meetings, and we need to wait to see if any of that budget process changes statutorily that requires timeline changes. So the one exception to not being on the third Monday is our next meeting in February would actually be the third Tuesday because of President's Day, which would be February eighteenth, but otherwise, unless there's conflicts with the Board on any of those dates, it would be the third Monday. I'd just like to point out, there is sometimes some exceptions to that because of conflicts or holidays off where people may be out of town, and it wouldn't be appropriate to hold a public meeting where maybe the public couldn't attend, so...
So is there a motion from the Board to approve those dates as listed?
I make a motion to approve those.
Thank you, Beth. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to approve the dates as listed for the coming months for the Board meetings. Any discussion from the Board? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is now open.
All right, motion carried, meeting dates approved, subject to change as often occurs as things come up for us. But we'll go on to Item Number Seven, Board Appointments.
So every year in January, you also have to renew Board Appointments to specific positions. Those positions within the district are Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, School Safety Specialist, Attendance Officer, Small Claims Officer, Title IX Coordinators, and the Indian School Board Association likes the Board to designate a Board Legislative Liaison. So this evening, it'd be my recommendation that the Board approve Mindy Brines as, to continue in the role of Treasurer, Nancy Lukart to continue in the role of Deputy Treasurer, to approve Jay Riley and Amy Stow as School Safety Officers, Jay Riley as the District Attendance Officer, Noah Bellhaus as the Small Claims Officer, Noah Bellhaus and Mindy Brines as our Title IX Coordinators, and Brock Severs as the District Board Legislative Liaison. So those would be my recommendations, and all those are continuations of our current people.
I make a motion.
All right, we have a motion, Amy, is that motion to approve the recommended list from the Superintendent?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that list. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion from the Board on that list of Board Appointments? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
Online voting is open.
All right, motion carried, Board Appointments approved, and that brings us to Item Number Eight, under which we've got a couple of actions to take. First is Board Member Compensation, which is required that we approve on an annual basis and is limited by statute and also by the, whatever the Board Compensation is for Indianapolis Public School Board. So it's kind of a strange combination of numbers there. That, the numbers before us today are the same that were established this past year, and so do we have a motion from the Board to continue Board Compensation at the same legally allowed rate from this past year?
Mr. President, I, I recommend to keep the same schedule that we've had before on the compensation. That would be a state mandated plus a stipend. Am I correct?
I believe that's correct.
That would be my, my, my motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ice. A motion to approve that annual compensation plus the stipend per meeting as listed. Is there a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that Board Member Compensation motion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is now open.
All right, motion carries, Board Member Compensation approved, and that moves us to Item B under Number Eight, which is Board Attorney Retainer. Recommended action would be to continue to retain Daniel Moon and approve his quarterly retainer of two thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion from the Board?
I make a motion to keep Daniel Moon.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to maintain Daniel Moon as the School Board's Attorney and continue his current retainer of twenty five hundred per quarter. Any discussion?
I always bragged about Daniel. I don't want to mean to put you on the spot, but I have bragged about you. Anytime we have a question or we need an answer, you always are there, you look it up, you give your advice, and I really appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
It, it's too bad, though. The answers aren't always what we want to hear. They are just good, sound legal advice, and I suppose that's what we need to hear.
Exactly.
Appreciate that.
He also puts up with my numerous calls, so I appreciate that.
All right, we got a motion made and seconded. I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is open.
Okay, appreciate the Board's confidence and continued retention of Mr. Moon. On to Item Nine, the Consent Agenda. The Board has had the opportunity to review the items under the Consent Agenda ahead of tonight's meeting, and those will be approved under Consent Agenda. Those items are the minutes of our December eleventh, two thousand twenty-four Regular Session, Claim Checks Number six thousand three hundred and, no, sixty-three thousand two hundred fifty-five through sixty-three thousand three hundred and ninety. Claim Checks number 6,300, no, 63,255 through 63,390, and Resignation, Retirement, and Employment Actions, is there a motion from the Board to approve that Consent Agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
I second it.
Got a motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote to approve the Consent Agenda.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, Consent Agenda approved, and that brings us down to item 10, which is Dr. Goggins and Dr. McKibben are going to talk to us a little bit about Student Enrollment Demographic Report that we have for North Gibson.
Dr. McKibben is with us this evening, and he's here to talk to the Board, we commissioned a student demographic enrollment study, I believe it was back in October, November timeframe.
About that, yes.
They did an excellent job, so he's here this evening, you have this presentation, if you want to open that, because it's behind us, so it's going to be hard for you to see, Dr. McKibben is going to go through, and as he progresses to each slide, he'll tell you we're moving on to the next slide, so he's going to share with us the findings of this enrollment study, which is going to be very valuable in us planning for the longer term future based off of what our projected enrollment is going to do in the long term, so, thank you for being here, appreciate you taking the time with us this evening, being patient with us as we reorganize the Board, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, two things before I go into the forecast, and thank you for making that classic comment of projections, these are forecasts, they're not projections.
Okay.
Two different things, projection is where you take a past trend, usually year-to-year survivorship, second to third, third to fourth, over a four or five year period of time, create an algorithm, and use that to literally project into the future, quick, easy, cheap, up until about the mid-1990s, all you had in the way of doing any kind of enrollment research, the problem with the projection is, they're almost always wrong, because the only way a projection can be correct is what's happened the last five years replicates itself over the next five or 10, I don't know about anybody here, I don't see the last five years again in my lifetime, so COVID pretty much did that whole method in. These are forecasts, two-step procedure, the first thing we do is a full population forecast of the district, your entire population, zero to four, 85-plus, male and female, we build a fertility, mortality, migration model specific to the district, we don't use national, regional, county, it's built based on your own demographic data, based on 2020 census, births, housing data, home sales, home construction, any variable we lay our hands on, okay? The second point I want to bring up before I get into it, and probably more important, don't let Daphne Alabama fool you, I was born and raised in Fort Wayne, I used to be Indiana State Demographer in the 80s and 90s, my doctoral dissertation was Indiana Demographics, by the way, my doctoral dissertation will cure any case of insomnia you ever had in your life, we've done probably over 150 school districts in the state of Indiana, and about 2,000 across the country, so, old hand at this, now. Get this to work.
I might have to point it behind you.
Wrong button.
The computer is up top there, so you might.
Ah, there we are, okay, now it works. Anytime you're doing a forecast, you have to have assumptions, these are broad socio-demographic economic parameters that we use to build the forecast models, the report lists all of the assumptions, I want to go through, I call the big four, these are the four assumptions have the highest probability of error or variation in the calculations, and the biggest one is B, the 30-year fixed mortgage rate stays between 5% and 7% for the 10 years of the forecast, why is it so important, it drives your housing market, okay? This morning, the 30-year fixed rate was 7.1%, went back above 7, I think it's probably going to stay within that range over the next 10 years, it won't go below 5, and here's a generational problem with the 30-year fix, those of us who are old enough to remember the 70s, 80s, and 90s, when the 30-year fix was 8%, 10%, 12%, 7% sounds pretty good, and my first mortgage was 8.5%, we thought we were robbing the bank, however, the current generation buying homes under the age of 45 see nothing but 3, 3.5, and 4 for the last decade or so, something's happened in the US we've never seen before, in the last two years, 30-year fixed mortgage rates doubled, never happened in two years before, so, 7% sounds like highway robbery, and that's one reason why we're having a lot of, love the gyrations we're having right now in the housing market, so, if you can't get a mortgage, you can't buy a house, and if you can't buy a house, you can't move into the district, okay? The other one is I on this page, this is the state of Indiana, Indiana is the only state in the country that has inter-district transfers, vouchers, charters, virtual, all going on at the same time, other states have some or the other, but none of them have all the four, you can't look at enrollment forecasting in this state without looking at the transfer policies, so, now up until last year, your district had been remarkably consistent about negative 220, a lot of variations in districts around the state, most districts in Indiana saw a jump in '22 and '23 when they expanded the voucher law to 226,000 for minimum income for vouchers, 97% of all households with kids in the state now qualify private school vouchers, remember, they passed that law to help poor people go into, into private schools, remember that, when you're making your $226,000 a year, not that many private schools around here, didn't hit you guys very hard at all, all right? The problem with the transfer law is, all it takes is an incident, and those numbers will spike, most recently, working in Southwest Allen, up in Allen County outside of Fort Wayne, they had an incident at one of their middle schools, it's one of the best school districts in the state, and two months later, 200 middle school kids were gone, they just transferred to neighboring school districts, and on the other side of the coin, Northern Wells, plugging along, staffing problems are great, all of a sudden, 75 middle school kids showed up, you know, so, yes, we can forecast the, the demographic, even the economic trends, with the transfers, variability is not only great, it's also immediate, and that's why school districts need to be very flexible in their, their staffing and their space issues, because it may go one way or the other, fortunately, when you see rapid changes like that, up or down, it tends to be a short-term phenomenon, and frequently, and again, this is looking at hundreds of districts in the state over the last six years, we have all their data on our computers, those year-to-year giant fluctuations kind of go back to the norm the next year, kind of an emotional response to something, then they come back or return to their original residential school district, for these forecasts, we're assuming net 220 students out, which is normal for Indiana schools about that proportion, there's district-to-district public transfers, but all of your charter, your voucher, your virtual, and your private are all out, you know, you don't get from those, they're all, they're all a negative, so that's why most school districts in the state have a net transfer number, how bad can it get, we're on our way up to, next week I'm presenting in Hamilton Southeast, their net transfer number is negative 2,100, you know, and that's, now I got a lot more kids, but 2,100, that's a whole school district in some areas, the other two is your housing market, we forecast an average of 20 new single-family homes being built per year in the next 10 years, more importantly, 180 existing home sales, everybody fixates on new home construction, nothing there, there's a roof, wild kids coming in, the backbone of everybody, not just here, you know, in this area, but the state, the Midwest, across the country, is the existing housing market, that makes up 80 to 85% of your housing market in most areas of the country, the dynamics of that is what's going to dictate how many kids you're going to have, type of households, so, we're looking at 180, more on that later when we get into age structure, but those are the four that has the highest probability of having dramatic changes on a year-to-year basis, wrong way, now, the number one predictive variable for population enrollment change, it's not births, it's not deaths, it's not even migration, it's the age structure of your population, how is your population distributed across the life course, you can't see the title here in the audience, but across top here, this is the school district in 2010, I'll show this as an example, and it's pretty easy to read, zero to four, that's your preschool, five to nine is your elementary, middle school, high school, 20 to 34, we call family formation ages, 80% of all births occur to women between the ages of 20 and 34 years old, despite what you've read in the popular press, fertility rates in the country haven't moved that much in the last 50 years, they've stayed a nice tight 15% band between 1.6 and 2.0 children per woman in her lifetime, now, granted, right now we're down the bottom towards that 1.6, but it hasn't really moved that much, when you see changes in the numbers of births in a small area, it's usually due to changes in number of women prime childbearing age, you're going to have a total fertility rate of nine, if you don't have women between ages of 20 and 34 years old, you're not going to have that many births, so that's what drives your fertility factor, 35 to 54 are the ages where most people have kids in school, okay, now, there are exceptions to that, I was one of them, I was a first-time father at 40, so I was 58 when my son graduated high school, I went to his graduation, and everybody said what a nice, well-behaved grandson I had, you know, so, but we're outliers, you know, so, but here's where it gets a little funky, 55 to 69, that's what we refer to as the empty nest households, and you've got the Smith family living down the road, been there for 20 years, 10 years ago was mom, dad, and two kids, but now 10 years later, the two children have grown up, graduated high school, and moved away going off to college, same household, same owner, but instead of four persons in the household, you now have two, okay, and this has been a dominant trend throughout the country for the last 15 years, in the 2010 census, the average household size in the district was 2.41, and 2020 census was 2.37, now, .04 doesn't sound like a lot, until you multiply it times almost 6,000 housing units, if your household size stayed the same, and in a very crude measurement, mom, dad, wherever the point is, is kids, all right, if the household size stayed the same, you would have had 220 more people counted in the 2020 census, and the majority of them would have been under the age of 18, okay, this is one of the dynamics we're looking at here, and household size dropped all over the country, last census in the US, even though our growth rate was the second slowest in our history, we still grew 22 million people, but during the same decade, the under-18 population dropped by a million, this is not just an Indiana problem, it's a nationwide issue, so, and then 70 and over, what we refer to as the downsizing ages, you'll see a slight uptick at 62, another one at 65 and 67, but most people don't downsize till they're in their 70s, it's not retirement that triggers downsizing, it's either the death of one of the spouses, or you both lose the ability to drive, okay, so, we have elderly migration is two phases, you have early, we call voluntary, people, usually in their 60s, there is the one, that you always hear about, they go to Arizona, or Texas, or Florida, the Ozarks, or Myrtle Beach, wherever, you know, but that's only about 15% of elderly migration, they tend to be more long-distance, tend to be still married couples, relatively healthy, and pretty wealthy, too, the other 75%, 85% are over the age of 70, as we call involuntary, they're moving because they can't drive, or one of the spouses died, they can't maintain the homes anymore, and they tend to move less than 50 miles, attend to stay in the area, and this whole dynamic of elderly downsizing is one of your primary drivers, and if we bring up the, this is the wrong way again, the same pyramid, come on, for, this is for the 2020 census, you'll notice you've got a large bubble of population now in the 50s and early 60s, that's one reason why your enrollment was dropping so much in the last decade, you had a lot of empty nesting going on, and again, that was a dominant, dominant demographic phenomenon across the country the last 10 years, but I want you to note something else here, see this zero to four bar, how it's smaller than five to nine, okay, it's because you have so few people in prime childbearing age, and the births were dropping, if nobody moved in or out between 2020 and 2025, you just left your own demographic devices, your elementary enrollment drops by about 150 students, not because anybody's leaving, not because they're transferring out, you just have smaller cohorts coming in behind it, and this will be this preschool deficit, and this is, again, a dominant trend throughout the state and the country right now, most school districts don't have enough zero to four-year-olds, so you would need in-migration of young households with kids just to break even, you know, and if you don't do that, your enrollment drops, just looking at the trend, your enrollment's going up or it's going down, the thing is, why is it doing that, and there's no such thing as a silver bullet variable that explains everything, everybody will look at one or two variables, there's about 15 or 20 to be looking at, some positive, some negative, and in toto, what's the impact on your population enrollment, but you'll also see here, if you move forward 10 years, if we go to 2030, these people, this large bar here, bubble of population, 55 to 65, are going to be 65 to 75, the number of households in the elderly age groups, particularly those who are homeowners, are going to start downsizing, it's going to accelerate after 2025, because right now, the peak of the baby boom is 68 years old, and the front end of it is 78, go forward 10 years, the peak of the baby boom is 78, and the front end is 88, they're going to start downsizing, because they can't maintain those homes anymore, and you can see here, the size of the population bubble you've got heading into the moving ages, so, news to my fellow baby boomers, we're not going to live forever, folks, you know, so get, get used to it now, so. Looking at the population changes, we forecast the district to grow about 3% population, a little less than state average, but again, host of reasons for that, your characteristics, only about 30% of your households have under-18 population, that includes preschoolers, that's roughly the state average, which is about 31%, there's not a school district in the United States where households with school-age kids make up the majority, the last two were in Utah about 20, about 25 years ago now, so, 30, 32, 33%, you're doing pretty well, again, your household size, 2.37, down .04 from the last census, and continuing to drop as you still have empty nesting going on, only about 32% of your households are between the ages of 35 and 54, those are the ages where most people have kids in school, the good news is, is you're already above 30% now, in 2025, of households over the age of 65, so the potential number of households able to turn over and allow new young households to move in is going to do nothing but go up over the next 10 years, and 70% are owner, owners and renters have two different dynamics, owners tend to be older, have completed their households, our family formation, move an average of 15 years, renters tend to be younger, still having kids will have preschoolers, and move an average of two and a half years, almost 30-year households are single-person households, people are always shocked at how high that number is, but 12.8% now is up to about 13.5, are single-person over 65, they're going to start turning over here within the next three or four years. Now, elementary enrollment is forecasted to decline by 20% between 2020 Now, elementary enrollment is forecasted to decline by twenty percent between 2024 and 2029, and then rebound by about nine percent, twenty-nine, thirty-four. The total net for the ten-year period is down twelve percent. Sounds like a rather radical drop, and the reason for that is the chart below it. This is the actual count by year of age from the 2020 census. Now, in 2020, these five-year-olds, that's kindergarten, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth. But you go forward to the 2024 school year, these one-year-olds are now your kindergarten. They're now five years old, first grade, second, third, fourth, fifth. Look at the size of the cohorts. It goes from one ninety, you know, seventy-eight, one seventy-eight, two hundred, fifty, sixty, fifty, forty-eight, seventeen. You've just got smaller cohorts coming in. This also tells us how much in-migration would need to occur, households with kids in individual years of age just to break even. That's why you're dropping by nineteen percent. You've got these large cohorts going on the middle school, you've got small cohorts coming in from your preschool. And we calculate this with something we call the market share, and that's on the next slide, okay? The numbers in red are first-grade cohorts. So, we calculate, here's your actual enrollment as a percentage of what that cohort size was. So, first graders in 2020, year one forty-five was eighty-one and a half percent of one seventy-eight. Now, these two years are the depths of COVID, so everybody jumps up in 2022. You don't want to mistake that for in-migration. Many cases, that's just students who chose non-public options coming back to the public schools. Survey jumps in twenty-two. But after that, if the percentages go up, that's in-migration or in-transfer. And if they go down, they're out-transferred or out-migration. And you can see, you know, drops to sixty-four, eighty-nine, eighty-four, eighty-two. You're still getting in the eighties of, but it's a smaller base, because you're going from two hundred kids in the cohort down to a hundred and fifty-two. So, you're still retaining about the same rate that you were before COVID, but you just have these smaller cohorts coming in, okay? Thing, nice thing about this, this is not guesswork. This was actually counted the 2020 census, you know, and they match up pretty closely to what your enrollment and numbers from other sources are, too. So, you've got a very, very small cohort coming in next year, okay, for your kindergarten, all right? So, all of this information goes into calculating the population forecast. Now, there's two ways to read this. You can look at an age group over time. You're five to nine, that's basically your elementary. So, you have seven nineteen, going to eight-ten, six-ninety, then bouncing up to seven-thirty. Or follow an age cohort through time. Zero to four become five to nine, ten to fourteen, fifteen to nineteen. This is your median age. Median age is the age where half the population is older and half are younger. Forty-one point four in the census and going up. And the reason for that is, where's the bulk of your population? You can see the large cohorts here, fifties, now moving to their sixties and seventies, okay? Births stay remarkably steady. The reason for that is, your birth rate stays the same, and the number of women in prime childbearing age stays the same. The deaths go up, not because of COVID or any problem, but you have an older population. You just have more people, we call prime dying age. I don't know if I'm going to find a better term than that. I used to define prime dying age as anybody over the age of sixty-five, but now that I'm sixty-nine, it's anybody over the age of eighty. So, you have to change on that. Note here, natural increase, that's the excess of births over deaths. See how the number goes negative? Even, you know, after COVID and all that, we already have eight states in the country and twelve hundred counties, nineteen of them here in Indiana, with more deaths than births. This is the dominant demographic trend of the next ten years with an aging baby boom. It's awful hard for your population to grow when you have more people dying than being born. It means net migration must make up all of your growth. Now, your net migration, hundred and forty, hundred and fifty, one forty, stays pretty constant. Your biggest in-migration flows are people twenty-five to forty years old, bringing zero to nine-year-olds with them. Your biggest out-migration flow is, not surprisingly, eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds going off to college. Second-largest one is people over the age of seventy. Now, that over seventy will be going at an increase, but as that goes in increase, you'll see more younger people moving in as they transfer the houses. So, the population has very, very modest growth, but the composition of that population changes rather dramatically as you're swapping out older emptiness households for new households, people coming in. Oops, wrong way again. And last one is, and my apologies to the audience, I know this is hard to read. This is the actual enrollment forecast. This is driven by the pop forecast, population forecast. Now, the analogy I like to use here is a bucket of water, okay? If I've got a bucket of water, and I'm pouring water in the top, and there's a hole in the bottom, as long as I'm pouring in faster than it's running out the bottom, the level will rise. But if for some reason, the hole in the bottom gets bigger, and it's now going out faster than I'm pouring in the top, if I keep pouring at the same rate, level will drop. Enrollment works the same way. What's the size of your K-in-one cohorts coming in? What's the size of your twelfth-grade cohorts going out? And over the last couple of years, the hole in the bottom of the bucket was bigger, and it's now kind of shrunk a little bit. You had a one fifty-five, one thirty, and you've got a couple more big ones coming out next year, one forty-eight. But this is going to start dropping down mostly into the one thirties and the one teens. As that happens, you're going to see less pressure on your enrollment. The K-in-one enrollments, in fact, you'll see it here in the K-two total, right about the end of the decade, stops being negative and starts going up modestly. Now, this is predicated on the pace and the magnitude that we have calculated in our assumptions of the empty nest elderly households downsizing, moving out, and allowing new young people to move in here. Now, I'll be the first person to tell you that if we have a problem in the housing market, the interest rates go to eight, nine percent, or we have some kind of economic downturn, or we still don't have any kind of housing for the elderly to move into, I'm going to be too high. Conversely, a lot of people out there going, hmm, home prices are high right now. God, I got a lot of equity in this home. I'm going to cash in, get out while the getting's good. It can go the other direction. They decide to speed up and just start dumping homes on the market, and I'll start moving out. You may see this turnover of households happen quicker. In that case, I'll be a little, a little too, probably too low. Now, what we do with all of our forecasts, and Eric, I'll give you a call next year when the fall numbers come out. We've done this survey for years. We do what we call an evaluation. It's not a recalculation, it's evaluate how we do, okay? And we usually were then like two percent at the district level, actually, right, one more and a half percent. So, that's pretty good. We did a one up in Penn Harris-Madison a couple of years back, third year. Had them at twelve thousand two hundred and forty-eight. Three years in the forecast, hit it right in the nose, twelve thousand two hundred and forty-eight. Worst thing that ever happened to me, because ever since, then the board expected the same level of accuracy. Next year, it was off by nine students, just gave me all kinds of grief. So, you're only as good as your last forecast. But we want to check on that for host reasons, because if I'm wrong, I want to know why, you know? And the first thing I'm going to look at is, which were your home sales last year? And if it wasn't a hundred and eighty, say it was a hundred and fifty, I'm going to be looking to be too high. However, if the housing market picks up and it's two-twenty, I should be too low. And I want to find out why I'm wrong, because you need to know why I'm wrong. And that's something that the board and the administration, the public can be looking at, too, because most people with kids move between April and August. That's your housing market. And see how your housing market sales are going next summer. And one eighty is the total number you want to be looking at from year to year, and you can kind of track that. Twenty-five minutes, that's good for me. That's pretty good. Questions?
Any questions from board members?
Dr. McKibben, very interesting, very enlightening. Just kind of a follow-up question, you know. It's very important to the school when planning over the coming years for staffing and how we can appropriately serve the student population we can expect. So, this forecast is super helpful to us, but it occurs to me that this same sort of population forecasting would have major impacts on the workforce available to potential investments and many other factors for our community. Can you talk a little about those impacts, or does your work look at that in any, in any way?
Well, there's a reason why we have a labor shortage in this country, is we don't have enough young people, so. And a lot of us boomers are retiring. We've kind of mitigated that because many boomers can't afford to retire now, so they're staying in their seventies. AARP had a great survey on that late last year, and they surveyed all the people between sixty-five and seventy-four still working. It's, why are you working? And they expected, well, it's because I like work, like to meet people. Three-quarters of them said, I can't afford to retire, you know? We tend to paint with broad brushes in our view of society, particularly with the, in the internet, and it's actually rather segmented, and not everybody is as well-off as you think they are. We tend to, like elderly migration, everybody looks at the ones going to Florida, you know, wherever you're going to the South, things like that. And I live in South Alabama now, and I can tell you how warmly welcomed us Yankee refugees are down there. But that's only fifteen percent of the elderly migration, and we tend to ignore that other eighty-five percent, which is much, much more common, and broad socioeconomic spectrums, things like that. So, they're going to stay in the labor force. There's also labor type, too. There's labor-intensive, there's low income, there's middle income. Everybody loves technology jobs. We've done all of the school districts in eastern United States that had auto plants building them. None of them had anywhere near the pop enrollment growth they were promised on that, because the migration dynamics were not taken into account. Got your plant down there, the great example of it. Remember, the Honda plant at Decatur County last month, they're thinking about merging districts, because they're actually dropping. That didn't bring them anything, you know? So, it's a very, very complex thing, but the basis is, how old's your population? Where are they in the life course? What kind of jobs you looking at, you know? So, and what are the salaries you paying, too? It's much more affordable to live in this area than many other areas of the country. Of course, no place is affordable if you don't have a job, you know, so there's... That was kind of the long answer to a short question, so I'm sorry.
No, I appreciate that.
So, in the trend today, for us older people, which I happen to be one of them baby boomers you're talking about, two things. We don't want to quit, because we don't want to die.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And, of course, I could mention grandkids, that's got a lot to do with it, you know? But as we, as we do that, there's a real call this date, or this date, and I think there was just a report come out on that, we're needed now more than we've ever been needed. People that retard are coming out of retirement because they're needed so bad, because of the shortages in the field. Now, I don't know whether you've, whether that's factored into this or not, but I can see as that trend, if that trend stays, people in my age generally stay where they're at, they stay in the same house. And that can affect the area in which you live. If you have, if you have that percentage go up, of baby boomers goes up.
If you don't have any place to go, you're going to stay put. It's like physics, you know? And we did a horrible job in this country building elder housing. I mean, this is, this is not a surprise rocket science. We've known this is coming for the last sixty years, you know?
Sure.
But they just wouldn't build it. And if they did build it, it was for still-intact dyads in their sixties with lots of money. They, and that's, again, only fifteen percent, and they ignored the rest of it. See, my theories are all going to wind up living with our kids, you know? My son just moved and didn't even send me his forwarding address, but I'm pretty good shape, but he's part of the labor force. I'm sixty-nine, that's why I'm still doing this, because there's no young demographics coming up behind me. They can do this, you know? We didn't train them, because they all wanted to be influencers and things like that, you know? No one wanted to sit there and do the math and the geography and the history and all that good stuff. But I'm sure I just insulted somebody behind me, but I don't care what they think, you know? So, we're not retiring as boomers, you know, as you said, well, because we're not needed. A lot can't. A lot of my peers are still working because they can't afford to retire.
Ten years ago, the trend was us older people need to get out of the way.
No, they didn't want us to hang around, because we charge more money than young persons. They were going to swap us out for cheap young labor. Then they saw what they got, and they brought us back.
I don't know that that's...
And I really ticked off people behind me, didn't I, so?
That's not necessarily true today, the reason why they're, like I said, they want to keep living, and they're needed. So.
But you said it at the top of your comments, we're going to die eventually.
Oh, yeah, you're going to die.
And that's the factor people don't think about in forecasts here. Two things on that, very important. Every child in the district, second grade and above, right now, is out of your district by the end of these forecasts.
Most likely.
Everybody here, and the one people behind me, the one thing I know for sure is by 2034, if you still live in the district, you're still alive, you're going to be ten years older, guarantee you, okay? And you're going to be ten years farther down the life course. And people don't think about that. They think, well, this is going to stay the way things are right now. We're going to get older. Your kids are going to grow up, they're all going to move away, okay? This cohort right here, your first graders in 2032, aren't even born yet, you know? Where are they going to come from? And where are they going to live? And what are the parents going to do? Where are they going to work at? See, these are the questions people aren't thinking about.
Well, I want to thank you, you know, when I checked many references, people asked, you know, who can do this for us? Consistently, it was Dr. McKibben, and consistently, it was, he was spot-on within one percent. So, I'm going to, we'll talk in the fall, and we'll see. I'm sure you're accurate. I just want to talk about briefly what we do with this data. We have to know this to prepare for the future. Our district is going to change by student population. You can't continue to staff and the way you staff for eighteen, nineteen hundred students in ten years when your population is going to be fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred students. And you can't make that change like that, either. So, rather than being reactive and having to make rash decisions on staffing, to be prepared with this information, to gradually make staffing changes as attrition occurs, and as these smaller populations of grade-level students come into our district and larger leave, you can start to address this and remain financially solvent by taking small steps that aren't as impactful to what we offer in curriculum and staffing in our school district. So, that is the entire purpose of this, is to prepare and make incremental decisions now, planning for our future. So, what I'll be doing next is taking this information, presenting it with our staff and our teachers' association in discussion, and just talking about, how do we adjust to these projections and prepare for what is a very high likelihood of reality? And still be a high-quality district that offers great opportunities to our students. We can continue to do those things while adjusting to what our future looks like. This is a reality for nearly every school district, not all. There's a few areas of Indiana that are growing, but not many, correct me if I'm wrong, that aren't seeing a trend of downward student population. I think we'll see in the end of this and beyond the ten years, that start to hopefully move the other direction. And maybe there's things within this that change that sooner than that for us, but we have to be prepared. So, I certainly appreciate the ability to do this study and to be able to look and project in the future and prepare. So, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. McKibben? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I know you have to travel.
If you have any other questions, Eric knows how to get ahold of me, so I'll be more than happy to answer them.
Absolutely. And we'll be in touch. Thank you for being here. We'll all be in touch. be in touch and thank you for being here.
All right. Item number eleven on our agenda. The board has got some work ahead of us as we have several policies due for updates. We've got some updates from Neola and Dr. Goggins.
Yes. So we have two volumes of policy updates. One came out in November and one just came out in December. But with board transitions, I didn't want to be in a first reading with one board and a second reading with another, so I held both off to January and February. So Mr. Valhouse, I updated so that we will just take a, a vote on first reading under the item B, so we don't have to take two votes. So I'll read through, I'm not going to read every policy for those in the audience, but I will read the changes, the policy number and the, the policy title that is being reviewed by the board for first reading. And then we'll have a second reading and potential approval at the February meeting. So in volume thirty-six, number two, there's policy one sixty-four is a technical, technical correction to notice of meetings. Policy by law, one sixty-four point four, meetings of the board defined is being rescinded. By law, one sixty-five, board meetings is being updated. By law, one seventy-two, legal counsel is being updated. Policy one-two-one-three-point-zero-one is a technical correction on staff and student relations. Policy number one-two-two-zero, employment of the superintendent is an update. Twelve-thirty, responsibilities of the superintendent is an update. Sixteen-seventeen is an update on weapons. Twenty-three-twelve is being rescinded and is relating to class size. Twenty-six-twenty-three, student assessment is an update. Thirty-two-seventeen update on weapons. Thirty, thirty-two-twenty-point-zero-two, supplemental payments for teachers is an update. And forty-two-seventeen, weapons is an update. Moving on to volume thirty-seven, number one, that's the first updates for this calendar year. We have policy five-one-one-one, determination of legal settlement and eligibility for enrollment of students without legal settlement in the corporation and proof of Indiana residency. Fifty-one-thirty-six-point-zero-one, technology resources and other electronic equipment. Fifty-four-ten, promotion, placement and retention. Fifty-four-sixty, graduation requirements. Fifty-five-zero-zero, student conduct. Five-six-one-zero, suspension and expulsion of students. Five-seven-seven-two, weapons. Six-one-four-zero is a new policy and is depository agreements. Sixty-two-fifty, required ADM counts for the purpose of state funding and verification of residency for membership. Seventy-two-seventeen, possession of firearms and weapons by visitors. Seventy-five forty-point-zero-three, student technology, acceptable use and safety. Seventy-five forty-point-zero-four, staff technology, acceptable use and safety. Seventy-five forty-point-zero-nine is new as artificial intelligence. Eight-four-zero-zero, safety, school safety information. Eight-four-two-zero, emergency preparedness plans and drills. So all of those are updates, technical corrections and recentsions. Many of those are related to changes in legislation. And my recommendation would be that we approve first reading. And certainly if there's corrections or questions that we need to address before the second reading, we certainly would be prepared to discuss those and review those and prepare those for February.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. We've heard that recommendation from the superintendent to approve this first reading before the board. Is there a motion from the board to approve first reading on those policy updates?
I'll make a motion.
All right. We have a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, duly seconded. Any discussion about the motion to approve that list of board policy updates, first reading? Not approving those policies, but we're approving the first reading of those policies. Hearing no discussion. Call for the vote.
Online voting is now open.
All right. First reading is approved on those and we'll bring them back up at our meeting in February. Item twelve on the agenda, we have some out-of-state field trips coming before the board for approvals. Dr. Goggins?
We have three. Mr. Valhouse, again, we will just vote on the third C so that we can approve all at once unless we need to break those out. There are three out-of-state field trips, again, by state statute. If we have a bus traveling out of state, even if it's to Mount Carmel, the board has to approve and authorize those field trips for us to take them. So the first field trip is the FFA annual trip to Louisville, Kentucky for the Farm Progress Show and to Henderson, Kentucky for the Folcher Arch, to the, go to the Folcher Archery Center. Then we have PCMS Choir to Murray State for the Coral Festival. And then I've asked Mr. Bradley to come and speak briefly about a much further trip and a new trip that he is planning and to take with approval of the PCHS Choir to Universal Studios. So I'll let him talk about that briefly before we move on with board, board action. So thank you, Mr. Bradley, for coming this evening. I appreciate that.
Of course. Glad to be here. So I thought it would be a good idea to present that as an option for the kids to do, not this coming spring break, but the next spring break, to take them to Universal Studios. The way that we would approach it would be kind of the same way that band did where parents and students would pay for this. It would not come out of an ECA account. Ideally, I would like for the opportunity for students to maybe fundraise a little bit to bring their individual costs down. So if Sally raises a hundred dollars on a fundraiser, then she can bring her overall cost down by that amount and so forth. Let's see. It would be about three days. The total amount of kids that said that they'd be interested in going would be somewhere around thirty-five. You can expect half, maybe a little bit less than that. There's a certain Goldilocks zone, if you will, of the amount of kids that we can bring where we might be able to fly down, fingers crossed. We'll see. If not, we would be taking a bus. Depending on how many kids can go, we would perform at Universal Studios. If we have fewer kids, it would probably be some kind of masterclass or something like that.
And that is a charter bus going down, not a school bus?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
I figured that was the case. Just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, definitely. But it would be over the spring break, like I said, over in twenty-twenty-six.
What is the safety and security of the trip and chaperones and supervision of students? Talk a little bit about that. That's something that's important when you're going on a trip.
Of course.
Like Universal. Just want to know a little more about that.
Yeah, no problem. So I've spoken to a couple of folks. I've spoken to Matt King about potentially being a chaperone coming down. My wife as well. And of course, I would like to leave that open to choir parents as well, if they wanted to come down and, and come along, kind of help out as we go. As far as security goes, I, I'm not exactly sure how that would work. I assume that, that the parents with all of us being there, that would probably be, you know, enough. Do you guys have any suggestions on what else I should do with that?
Well, I just, I ask that some of the trips with the educational travel groups, they provide sometimes, like the one that went to Boston at a hotel. Of course, you know, in that case, you're taking maybe fifty, seventy or a hundred kids, but they provide night security in the hallways of the hotel. Not all do that. That one was through EF Tours and I, I don't believe that's the group that this is through. But so, I mean, having plenty of chaperones obviously is important, but I just was curious if this group offers any type of guided support on the trip in Universal or other places as some, some tours do that.
I haven't read anything about that from my trip coordinator, but I would be very happy to ask. I'd be curious too.
I, I don't know that it's necessary for the board to approve that. That'll be their choice. But just, I think, knowing more about that yourself and
Sure.
Providing that information to Mrs. Stow and just knowing what is that structure like, because some places offer more than others. And, you know, with no built-in security, that probably means you need to have maybe a, a little more of a presence with your chaperones. So just something I thought is good to think about.
Yeah.
Who is the trip through, Mr. Bradley?
Let's see. I believe it's music travel.
Yeah, that's the same one the band is used to go to Disney, correct?
Through the same person, I believe, actually, as well.
Okay.
Music travel consul, consultant, yeah.
I've had thirty-five kids say that they would be, you know, take it seriously about being interested in going. And if the band is any guy to go by, you can expect about half of that or so.
Fifteen, twenties.
Yeah, I'd say.
It looks like within the cost, it includes accommodations, tickets and food. So really what they need to raise, other than maybe buying, you know, souvenirs and things, it really would be within all of that package.
Exactly.
Would have to bring other, any other money to the table beyond what's required to, to be able to have your seat on the, on the bus or the plane.
Exactly. It's all, it's all covered right there in that cost. So we shouldn't need anything else.
Just doing a quick search. It does look like music travel consultants does offer private security officers for an additional fee to maintain, says what it says, to maintain a safe environment on student floors. So it looks like that could be an option, but it doesn't look like it's built into the cost.
Something to look at, definitely. Any questions from the board?
I think it sounds like an exciting opportunity, opportunity for the students. You know, you've, you've got a tradition with choir of taking them on trips and giving them opportunities to showcase their skills and abilities. And I think adding in something like this will just build more enthusiasm around the, the program. So I appreciate you bringing it to the board and, and also doing so well in advance. You know, you have fourteen months to work out
Yeah.
What does security look like? And, and how are we going to cover all this and who else is going? So you've got time for planning, but I do appreciate that.
And I will say, if you end up getting enough to be able to fly, you can work with Mr. Hadley and like we have with others, we can get to and from the airport. If it's Indianapolis or if it's Nashville or Louisville. We're approving an out-of-state trip. We would just need to add that transportation to that, but we have done that for other trips like this.
That would be fantastic.
We'll, we'll take care of that. So.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. When we do these bigger trips that go a longer distance, it's nice to speak to the person who's planning it. And I know you had other things you'd probably like to do this evening, so thank you very much.
Happy to be here.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So the boards had the opportunity to review these requests ahead of time. And we've heard from Mr. Bradley, is there a motion from the board to approve those three out-of-state field trips?
I'll make a motion.
All right. Have a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? I'd just add that, you know, I hope that the Murray State trip goes smoother this year, but I do appreciate, I talked to students who were on that trip and they all felt safe and had fun. They just didn't get a say. Well, although maybe on the bus, I'm not sure. But appreciate your extra efforts on that trip to keep our students safe. There's no further discussion. I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is open.
All right. Motion carries. Trips approved. And thank you to Mr. Bradley for the trips you're planning. And also I would commend Colt Hadley for the trips that he's taken FFA on. It looks like the usual traditional farm show trip, but then also adding another one that's focused on farmers' physical and mental health there in Henderson. So appreciate that exposure for our FFA students. Brings us down to item number thirteen on the agenda, school makeup days. Dr. Goggins?
The, the excitement of the weather is, has certainly had an impact. So currently, we had a snow day, makeup day built in in December that we didn't use. So we had four makeup days left on our calendar that we are currently going to need to use. And we still have one remaining to determine what we are doing. So January twenty-fourth is a makeup day, February fourteenth, March fourteenth and April eighteenth. So we still have last Friday that we have to determine how we are making that up with no built-in makeup days left. So I just wanted to share options with the board and, and kind of discuss and hopefully maybe determine the path forward. And, and we had some discussion today with administrative team and individuals, other, some other individuals, including Mr. Archer with the teachers association. So we have the option to turn some days off in the calendar that are off in the calendar as holidays into makeup days. With Martin Luther King Day being Monday, that's pretty short notice with people probably maybe having some plans there that I don't think that is a true viable option, though we could. So looking at presidential, President's Day on February seventeenth could be an option to change that from a holiday to a makeup day. We also have the Friday before graduation on May twenty-third that could be turned into a makeup day. And then the state allows us to do no more than three asynchronous virtual learning days, and we have not used any of those. And discussions today, knowing that we probably, well, we still have a lot of winter weather ahead of us that could turn into a disaster if we don't give ourselves plenty of opportunities to make up school. I think it's been a long time since we've exhausted our days this early. So I, I like the option considering getting a couple more in-person learning days on our schedule as makeup. One of those needing to be makeup for Friday, getting a second day. So looking at President's Day, the seventeenth, as a, changing it to a makeup day. Looking at the twenty-third as another makeup day we would have in our arsenal if we need it. Then we have three asynchronous learning days we would jump to next. And we would begin preparing our teachers to start to think about what that looks like. So hopefully, when we miss, after we make up the additional one day on the twenty-third in person, we would jump into asynchronous. And hopefully at that time of it occurring, say, next Wednesday, we had to miss our second day and we'd be ready to jump into asynchronous learning. We'd be prepared to issue that by a certain time of the day, that day the snow day occurs, and give a week to complete those, for students to complete those assignments. So I think we can be prepared to do that with a little bit of time. High school and middle school are more prepared for that than elementary because they use Canvas more frequently, high school especially, and many of our teachers at middle school. So I, I just think with the amount of weather we could potentially have ahead of us, having multiple days that prevent us from adding days to the end of the calendar, which would be at that point after Memorial Day, which would be difficult for staff attendance and student attendance, is what we have to do with, with what's in front of us. So I looked into, can we waive days? The state does not allow a waiver of instructional days. There's zero chance for that. They will allow you to apply for additional asynchronous learning beyond three, but you have to demonstrate that you cannot do synchronous virtual learning due to elementary students not having Chromebooks, a percentage of students who do not, do not have reliable internet service. And we have, I think, things that could demonstrate we should be awarded additional asynchronous days beyond the three.
What about if you have state of emergency or?
Nothing. Not allowed. Nope. Nope. So the only waiver is applied to get more asynchronous learning days. But you have to use your built-in days and the three asynchronous to even ask for more. And then it's, you have to do that within ten days of missing and the state has to approve it. And if they don't approve it and you did an asynchronous, you lose funding for that day or you have to then schedule asynchronous or in-person learning day. So I don't like it, the, the thought of taking a holiday and turning it into a makeup day, but I also think that's a much better option than the potential of adding after Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Yeah, you won't have no one here.
So I don't, I don't like having Martin Luther King in that short notice. I mean, it's Tuesday and that would be Monday. So I think that potentially is a burden and, and harmful to our attendance and our staff attendance. So I would say we would jump to making President's Day a makeup day, making the twenty-third an in-person makeup day. Then we go to three asynchronous days, which gives us four more days we could miss before we have to start thinking about what are we doing next or seeking a waiver for more asynchronous days. So that's my recommendation. President's Day, the twenty-third, and then use our three asynchronous. And we start preparing for our staff to be able to jump into asynchronous learning when that, when that needs to occur on that day, day missed. So.
Perhaps we do get more snow. I mean, I, I hope not, but it doesn't look good. So we will have to So we will have to go after graduation, I mean.
Well, we would need to miss five more days for that to be something we need to consider. If we get there, my approach and recommendation would be we seek additional asynchronous learning days. But when you start getting into four, five, six, seven, eight, maybe more asynchronous days, that is also very challenging to implement effectively with that many days all at once. So that's why the state limited it to three, because they really want you to connect with students synchronously. But we have challenges with that.
So the way I understood it from a nearby corporation, you can, in a particular five-day week, you can have three e-learning days, if you want. Then a day back at school, and then two more.
So the state only allows you three asynchronous, which means you assign the virtual learning and students do it and teachers are available by email or, you don't have to connect face-to-face through like a video chat. That's a maximum. You can do as many asynchronous where at least fifty percent of the school day has a teacher connected and from their computer with students on their computer. You can do as many of those as you want.
In a row.
In a row.
Well, the kind of bad thing about this, I mean, the kids go to school, they have their homework, and then they're going to have this e-learning on top of that in the evenings, which, yes, it can be done, but that is a lot, but.
That's why I feel like getting, making up Friday on President, that last Friday on President's Day, getting us another day on the twenty-third as a makeup day gives us a chance that maybe we don't have to do that. But at that point, we've, we're exhausted on days within the calendar without adding in-person days at the end of the calendar. So then we would jump into asynchronous virtual learning days. Some other school districts around us are also changing, because several don't have built-in snow days, or they only have two. So they are changing holidays such as Martin Luther King and President's Day to in-person learning days because they've exhausted their three, because that's all they planned for was asynchronous virtual learning. So they're in the position where they are doing the opposite. They now have to figure out how to put days in the calendar to make up or request a waiver for additional asynchronous days. But I can tell you, when they've had, their communities are speaking out on the other side of that of, we've done four virtual learning days, we want them back in school. So we're on the other side of that. And that's just the approach we've taken, which is we prioritize getting kids in-person learning here because we believe that's what's best for our students. Just a thought and philosophy, and some people agree and disagree with that. But I think our best bet is to get us as many days of options in-person and asynchronous learning before the end of our current calendar and before graduation on the twenty-fourth. So, so we don't have to add. We will have horrible attendance. Seniors won't show back up, nor should we expect them to, but we have to. And we're going to have some significant staffing issues as well. So we'll have staffing issues on the seventeenth and the twenty-third as well, but we'll just have to work through those.
Well, we've had some experience.
We've had, we had to do this a long, several years ago. We also had to add, which the state doesn't allow anymore, we added minutes to school days to make up a day. You can't do that anymore. I asked, can we do that? Not that I wanted to, but it's not an option. So we've had some difficult times. It's been a while.
It's come in handy.
It did, but it was, it was, it was, it was tough.
Yeah.
It was very tough. First few times we did it was okay, but, I mean, once you're doing a full week or two weeks of adding thirty minutes, forty minutes to the school day, it's tough on kids and it's tough on staff.
To me, you know, and extending more days e-learning is not a positive thing for us.
I'd like to avoid that. I think there's a good chance we may have to use some or all of our three. And we want to be prepared to do that, but.
We don't know where we'll land in March.
Sure.
You know.
But we want to hold those days till last. Because, you know, one of the big lessons we got from COVID and shutdown and e-learning is that, well, we were, not lessons, but reminders, is that kids learn best in schools from teachers. And for us, for our kids to get what they need to, for our corporation to see the educational growth in the students that we're trusted to serve, those kids need to have as many, if not all, hopefully all, of those one hundred and eighty days they're guaranteed of education. And so this plan that you've recommended prioritizes in-person learning until everything else is exhausted. So I appreciate that.
What I'm really concerned about is we will, not only us, but other schools, we'll get to a point where, you know, we, we're looking at it at this point, at the, at the middle of January, like, yeah, you know, if we don't have any more snow from now to the rest of the year, we'll be okay.
Maybe we will.
Or maybe by the end of January, we will be done to, with it, and we'll have it all worked out. You realize that in the middle of March, we've had disaster snowfalls in this part of the world.
The other challenge with jumping in and doing virtual learning, or if we have to expand that and do more than the three, we have hourly employees that by statute have to work those hours to be paid. So if they're not here working those hours, because we did virtual, so instructional assistance, I have to find justifiable hours they work to make up that time. So they have to work after the last day of school or we have them work an extra hour at the end of the day for so many days. And that's for quite a few of our annualized hourly employees that we have to figure that out. Or they have to use paid time off instead of working those. So there's some real logistical issues you have to figure out with that. Or the board could potentially, we need to review that, have to pass a resolution authorizing us to pay those people for work they didn't do. And that's questionable whether or not it would be allowed in a non-emergency situation such as they allowed for with COVID from the State Board of Accounts perspective. So there's just challenges to jumping straight into virtual learning that.
We've kind of been jumping around for the last ten or fifteen years. You know, we have some years just a little bit worse than others and some.
We were due for a bad year.
Really good. We've had some years where we didn't have any. And then comes along in nineteen seventy-eight, when the whole world around here is shut down. And we're, we're not going to be able to prepare for that no matter what we do. So we have to do what we can do.
It's just a tough position. We just have to do what we feel is right and move forward. So again, my recommendation at this point would be adding President's Day, February seventeenth, as a makeup day, which we would be in session for as our current need for one more makeup day. Our next makeup day, if needed, would be May twenty-third. And then we would jump into three asynchronous virtual learning days if needed. So that would be my recommendation, Mr. President.
Well, thank you for the recommendation. So the board needs to take a vote to adopt this change to the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school calendar?
Yes.
As recommended, or certainly the board could make a decision to go some other direction. Is there a motion from the board?
I make a motion to go along with Dr. Goggins' recommendation.
All right. Got a motion from?
My second motion.
And second. We got a motion and second to approve that addition as Friday, May twenty-third, as our next makeup day. And we will have school on Monday, February seventeenth, as an additional makeup day. And then after those are exhausted, we would look at using those three asynchronous learning days. But hopefully, we don't get that far down the tree.
I hope not.
There'll be plans in place so we don't have to use them. We got a motion made and second. Any discussion from the board? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Motion carries. Calendar amended, and that brings us to item fourteen on the agenda, where we're going to go through some steps of operation to get into the Board of Finance meeting. So first, we'll need from the board a motion to suspend the regular meeting and open the Board of Finance.
I make a motion.
Have a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, newly seconded. Any discussion on that motion to suspend the regular meeting and open the Board of Finance? Hearing none. Call for the vote.
Online voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. So we are now officially in that Board of Finance meeting, open and in session. The past practice of this board for time immemorial has been to elect the officers of the Board of Finance to reflect the same officer positions from the regular Board of Trustees. At this organizational meeting every year, we also need to go through the process of electing those officers for the Board of Finance. Is there a motion from this board to approve that the President of the Board of Finance is also the School Board President? The Secretary of the Board of Finance is also the School Board Secretary?
Make a motion.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion to approve the President and Secretary of the Board of Finance? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is open. Not getting anything from Mrs. Davis.
It didn't pop up.
No, it's not there.
You can ask her to give you a voice vote if you'd like. He can mark it for you.
Mrs. Davis, would you tell us yea or nay?
Yea.
All right. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Officers elected, and we're now in session with officers for the Board of Finance. I'll turn it over to Dr. Goggins to review our twenty-twenty-four investment report and policy review.
Yes, and this is, again, a statutory, a statutory requirement to have a Board of Finance meeting as you reorganize. So part of that requirement is to review the twenty-twenty-four calendar year investment report as well as a review of the investment policy. So the investment policy is listed for you. There has been no update to that. It is the same. You don't need to approve that. It's just knowing and being aware of that investment policy. The board will need to approve the end-of-twenty-four financial investment report. This is the interest earned on accounts. These would be our bank accounts and investment accounts. We hold two different bank accounts that, and bank investment accounts that grow interest. Last year, in twenty-twenty-three, we had our best year in a long time with investment interest at two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars and fifty-three cents investment earned. Happy to report in twenty-four, we beat that with three-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, thirty-four dollars and fourteen cents earned in interest. So that is good news. I expect that that probably will continue with a good rate of return on our accounts for the foreseeable future into twenty-five. I continue to evaluate based off of the policy, other opportunities to invest cash balance into statutorily allowed investment opportunities. But the interest we're earning on our bank account is producing pretty effectively. So still will continue to evaluate in twenty-five, is there opportunities to invest portions of our cash balance in money market funds that still allow us access to those dollars and other opportunities like that. I usually hold at least one or two meetings a year with the Indiana Bond or the Indiana Investment Fund, which we can subscribe to, and other local investment opportunities that are allowable by, by policy and statute. So again, it was a good year. We earned great interest on our accounts. So at this time, it'd be my recommendation that the board approve the investment report for twenty-twenty-four, and then we will move on to fiscal indicators.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Goggins. Glad to hear that the investments are doing better than ever. Is there a motion from the board to accept that twenty-twenty-four investment report?
Make a motion.
Have a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that twenty-twenty-four investment report approval? Hearing none, I will call for the vote.
Online voting is now open. Mr. Rice, would you like to voice vote? All right. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay. Motion carries. Investment report approved. And that brings us down to item C, fiscal indicator review. Dr. Goggins.
So this is the last item required of the Board of Finance meeting, providing a report on fiscal indicators. The distressed unit appeals board process requires that all districts present to their board during the Board of Finance meeting the overview through the fiscal indicators. This was developed to give the board and the community a close inside look to the financial stability of school districts. It also is used by the Department, the distressed unit appeals board, to determine if you are a fiscally distressed unit, which then they provide you resources. We are not a fiscally distressed unit, which is great. And I just want to highlight a few pieces of the fiscal indicators. So the first few pages are just enrollment information, which you heard a lot about. So we'll jump to the fund balances. You will see that our fund balances, though they decreased slightly, and I'll talk about why, they are actually pretty consistent and in some areas, they've actually increased slightly. We did see a decrease in our rainy day and really pretty stable in our operations rather than seeing slight increase. But there is factors that, that decrease in stable in operations was because we did a big project. So this is capturing half of that project expenses up through the end of the fiscal year in June. So we spent a significant amount of cash balance, still healthy cash balances, to complete that project along with grant funds. So we are stable, slightly down in our cash balances, but very stable. And we will build those cash balances back up now that that project has been paid for. On the annual deficit surplus, you will see we have stayed or improved, been steady or slightly improved, our annual deficit or surplus and have a surplus. You do see a yellow deficit, and again, we see those nearly every year. That is because we have federal funds that are reimbursable funds. You spend it to get it, and you don't get all of your reimbursement before the end of the fiscal year or the end of the calendar year. So unless they are on the spot and get you those reimbursements before this report is generated, you're always going to have negative deficit with federal funds like Title I, Special Education, Title II, Title IV, because you're requesting those after you spend them. But our surplus in other funds has been good. And the next page, the fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, really shows you the health of the school district. So last year, we had, so this is a full year of your expenditures and a picture of if you had those same expenditures and you didn't receive any more funding, how much from your cash balances could you cover of that full year of expenditures? The state recommends having at least twenty percent, up to forty percent in available dollars in case you didn't get your state payments, which, or your tax draw. That isn't going to happen, but in Illinois, it does happen. So if there was a strong economic downturn, you need to be prepared that you might have a delay of a month or two months. Our county has been great of getting tax draws to us on time and as quickly as they possibly can, and we appreciate that. But we, last year, were at thirty-seven point eight percent. This year, we are at thirty-eight percent of being able to have cash available to be able to pay thirty-eight percent of our yearly expenditures based off of last year's expenditures. That is very safe and comfortable where we need to be, which has allowed us. which has allowed us to commit as much of our new dollars as possible to programs, staffing, and increases. The last page just shows you the types of revenue that make up our total budget. So, again, these show we've stayed steady and consistent from last year, which is where we want to be, even with spending significant amount of cash balance towards a project that we prioritize. So, great news, we will continue to be fiscally sound. Things like the enrollment study, it's important for us to continue to be able to stay fiscally sound and not be on the radar of the distressed unit board. You do not want to be there, and there are districts who have been there and been taken over, and certainly, we are going to stay away from that. So, great news, I think it's a good report of our fiscal indicators. So, I'll take any questions you may have. None, then we just need to, no action needs to be taken on that item, we're just moving on to closing that fiscal, or Board of Finance.
All right, well, thank you, Dr. Goggins, for that review, and glad to see our finances are in order. You know, we're meeting the statutory requirements of the Board of Finance during this period, so it seems as if we're going through the motions, but it's something that you, certainly the Superintendent's Office and the Board is constantly monitoring is the financial health of the corporation, and I appreciate your efforts and your team's efforts at making sure that we are in sound financial situation. But having satisfied the legal requirements of the Board of Finance for this meeting, I would now entertain a motion to close that Board of Finance and reopen the regular session.
Make a motion.
Now, we have a motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Got a second and maybe a third. Any discussion on that motion to reopen our regular session, close the Board of Finance? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, so we're back in our regular session, and brings us to item 17 for other agenda items. Dr. Goggins, do you have anything under other agenda items?
Just one item, I wanted to recognize our Board, this month, January, is Board Appreciation Month. Not just saying this because you're my bosses, and my stability in this job is dependent upon you, and certainly, I want to butter you up a little bit, but everything I'm going to say is accurate and true. We have continuously had a Board, including this Board, previous Boards, that are fully dedicated to their roles, are in it for the right reasons. We have Board members engage in professional development activities above and beyond what other Boards do. When we go to state conference, when we go to our regional meetings, we're consistently there as a whole group, and you see districts that aren't there at all with their Boards. And we're consistently reaching milestones, and I'm sure this Board will continue that with Board recognitions, and this job is countless hours, countless contacts from community members, you listen, you guide, you provide information to me, you make decisions that guide policy and hiring of our District. And just recognizing you for that hard work during School Board Appreciation Month is certainly deserved, and I just thank you for your service, and I'm sure the community thanks you as well. It's often a thankless position, sometimes you do get thank yous, but you certainly deserve it, so thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Dr. Goggins, and yeah, I very much appreciate fellow Board members because, you know, it's a tough position to be in, to be in, you know, elected members from the community, representing the community, and advocating to improve student outcomes as our main goal, but we're not education professionals, and we're out of our depth here. But we're bringing the best that we can, and putting in the effort to educate ourselves on the current issues facing our community and our schools at the state level to make sure that we can best serve our community in this role, but I appreciate that. And I think January is probably appropriate for School Board Appreciation Month because this Board has made very few mistakes thus far this year. Best record we'll have all year. All right, item 18 on the agenda, we've got reports, starting with Mr. Veltouss.
Patrons, we're getting close, sorry, I know this is a long meeting, appreciate your patience.
And I'll try to be as brief as possible, because I know it's 8:19. But I had three things I just wanted to cover. First of all, we've been talking about summer school for this upcoming summer. And as the Board knows, we've experimented and thought a lot about how we're structuring summer school in the past. We want to maximize student learning and student, number of students engaged in summer school. We came across an opportunity just recently, been partnering with Southern Indiana Education Center to write a grant to update our summer school curriculum and programming in grades K through 8. So, those will be students exiting grades K through 8. There's a curriculum from the Indy Summer Learning Labs, which is from a group called the Mine Trust, which was a group put together by a former mayor of Indianapolis to help improve education in Indianapolis. But they've been seeing some great success with this Summer Learning Labs curriculum over the past several years, and so, there's a grant that's offered for schools who are interested in adopting this curriculum and this structure. Some of the, so, we've thrown our hat in the ring with the S I E C and have become a part of this grant. If that all comes to pass, what we'll be looking at would be a slightly different model than what we've had in the past. This, one of the things that's, I think, good about this model, but it's going to make it a little bit more difficult, is there's a high level of teacher training that goes into it. So, before the students would come in for summer school, there is a week of full-day teacher training, and just to make sure that teachers are up to speed on what they should be teaching the students, and why, and what they need to be looking for. So, there's that component, which will be, I think, a good thing for our students, but it's always difficult to get staff who've just gotten through a whole school year to want to always do that. But we've typically had good success with our staff being interested in summer school, so I suspect we'll have a high number of applicants that will want to do that as well. The student days, it's in line, similar to what we've had in the past, past several years at least since COVID. It calls for a minimum of 20 days for at least three hours per day is what the curriculum is calling for. So, that would put us right near the end of the period where we've offered summer school before, if we offer teacher training directly after Memorial Day. So, that's something we're very interested in, we've shared with our administrative team today, this idea, and it's something that we'll be sharing with our staff in the next couple of weeks, and going into some more detail with them about, you know, what this would potentially look like. Because with a change like this, we want to get ahead of our summer school recruitment this year. So, we're looking to move in that direction with summer school.
And we will pay teachers for those four days of training. It'll be extra days that they work, but they will be paid for those days.
That's one of the good things about it, because that extra week of training could pay for a really nice vacation somewhere for some of our teachers, so. Any questions about that? And I just wanted to share very briefly, I know I'd spoken with the Board before about the iLearn Checkpoints Summit. I attended that with Mrs. Willis, Mrs. Westland, and Mrs. Stafford. And this was a summit put on by the State DOE to share information about the data that schools are getting back from the iLearn Checkpoints pilot that we are involved in. So, we got a lot of good information, we had a time to meet with just the four of us and talk a little bit about, you know, where each building is, what our next steps should be. So, it was time well spent, I think, and we were able to get some detailed next steps for each building. One of the concerns that we had, and I just wanted to share that with the Board, was we're still not seeing the level of detail we need from the data on the individual student level for this to be as helpful as we want it to be. And that was something I expressed, and there were several staff members in the meeting who expressed that to the State, and they knew that was coming. What we've got is, I included a sheet from the State about this. They're calling this a PLD map, PLD standing for Performance Level Descriptors. So, right now, the data we're getting back on each student for math and language arts is only putting them into a category for the entire, either math or language art. It's not breaking it down for us by student, by skill or standard. So, what it does is it gives us, this is what your student's overall score was for math, this is what your student's overall score was for language arts, and then, based on that score, it says this student falls in either the below, the approaching, the at, or above categories. And then, it will tell you, you know, for this standard, whether, if that's third-grade reading, understand the six major syllable patterns, if the student's in the below expectations category, this is what they need to work on. If they're in the approaching category, this is what they probably should work on. And the at, same thing for all four categories. So, it's a very broad view of just kind of like, well, if your student's in this category, this is probably what they need to work on, and it does not break it down individually with what each student did on the test, it's just kind of generalizing it. So, we got them to commit to saying, that is something that we'll have for you next year, that we'll have that data by skill and standard, or at least by major standards broken down. But they were open and transparent about that they don't have, they haven't had enough time to get it to that level of detail yet, but that is where they would like to go. So, it's unfortunate that we don't have that detail yet, because that was, I think, what everyone wanted to hear and see is, hey, you know, how do we break this down by individual student? We can't yet, that doesn't mean that the data's not going to be helpful and useful for us, it is, but we're just, we're not there yet, where, the State's not there yet with the data they're giving us. So, I know I'd shared quite a bit about that with the Board before, so just wanted to give you an update. And then, the final thing is a celebration. I know, again, this is something I've shared previously. Our primary school administration and staff have been working very hard all year long on implementing a walk intervention model, teaching, helping our students in areas that each specific student has deficiencies in. So, there's a screener that they use, it identifies what students are good at, what they're not good at, and then, those students are sent out, each student is sent out to a small group of five or six students that works on that specific skill. And it's quite a feat when you think that these, some of these kids are kindergartners who are still learning to read, so they've got like flags and symbols that the teachers hold up, the kids know, I've got to go to the blue circle, and they walk to their intervention groups. So, it's taken a lot of planning, they've worked tirelessly on that, but today was the first day. So far, it looks like, I talked to Mrs. Williams early this morning, she said, looks good so far. And I stopped by Primary at the end of the day, and I never got to talk to Mrs. Boyd, she was in her office swamped by teachers, which I think is a good sign. They were trying to figure out, okay, well, now what we're going to do tomorrow. But they've had put a lot of work in, and they were able to launch that effectively today. So, big day at Primary School, a big day for our K through 2 students.
Thank you for that, any questions or comments for Mr. Veltouss? I would say, I do appreciate you expressing that concern to the Department of Education, because it is, I don't know, it's a little disappointing that they don't have line-level data, or even at least school-level data, and say, hey, you know, I think this is just generalities, like, well, most likely, if they're at this level, these are their deficits, but it may not be, and we don't know that for sure. It sure would be nice to be able to say that, hey, of the kids who are like those bubble kids just close to passing math, they were all struggling with multiplication on problems that included numbers greater than 10, or something of that order, you know, some idea as to, oh, this is a common deficit amongst our student population, this is what we work on. Or, as a data person, I would like to see that line-level data as my student, my son, these are his specific deficits, these are the things he could work on to score better. I do know that amongst our schools, and I'll commend our administrators again, that, you know, I've got two fourth-grade boys at home talking about their scores on iReady and iLearn and stuff like that, so there's a culture growing amongst the student population that values those scores, and that's really important to what our scores are going to be overall, because if they value those scores, if they see some importance to that, they'll maybe pay attention and answer all the questions, and we can get a more accurate picture of what's going on with these kids, and how our education's going. But hopefully, and it sounds like they're making that promise at the Department of Education level to, if we're going to go through this process of doing all the testing, we'd sure like more of an accurate picture of what we're working with, so we can make adjustments.
Absolutely, and I think two things, definitely, I'm glad you pointed out, we do see a culture shift amongst not only our students, but, you know, our staff. Dr. Chamberlain was telling a funny story the other day about staff using their test scores to, you know, hey, my test scores are great, I should get that extra ream of paper. So, you know, even with our staff, that is a culture shift. That wouldn't have happened two years ago, so kudos to Dr. Chamberlain and the rest of our administrative team. But also, about where the Checkpoints test is at, that has been the norm for iLearn scores forever. So, we've, it's always just been a single number that does not give us any idea of where, what students struggle with, other than, we know your student is either good or not good at math, or good or not good at language arts. So, they're, I think, still moving away from where they've been for a long time. It's good to know that their goal is at least to get to where we've got some individual data on a more granular level, but that's a big lift for them too, so.
Thank you, Mr. Veltouss, and if no other comments, we'll hear from Mr. McConnell.
Good evening, just to give you an update, we had a good break, work time, people not in the building, and was thankful we come back on Thursday and got two days of schools before the weather hit. So, that is the word of the month, is weather. I'd like to have a dollar for every time I've opened up my weather app and seen what was going to happen, but I think we've made it through it, and look forward to getting back to a little normal here for a while. We made some headway on the teacher store, got quite a bit of demo done down there, we got some materials in, going to pick up some other things tomorrow to continue work on that. Believe it or not, we're about six weeks away of starting to prepare our outdoor facilities for spring sports, and I'll be coordinating with Jason Engelbrecht on those days. And then, main thing I wanted to talk about is the appreciation. I know, Dr. Goggins, I mentioned this this morning at our admin meeting, but we had a successful week last week to be ready to come back to school because of the support we get up there, and I appreciate it. The folks that work with me, Denny Hadley, and all our custodians and maintenance people, we appreciate it too, because it makes our job easier and more fun to do, even though moving snow the second time's not near as fun as the first time, but anyway. But we do our best to make things ready for the next day, so.
Well, the thank you goes to you and your team, and Mr. Hadley and his team. It was a lot of work, and they come in and prepare the facilities, not knowing, and honestly knowing with this one, that we weren't going to be back for several days, but they were still here working, worked Saturdays, and would have worked Sunday if I probably hadn't told them, take a day off, you've got it as good as you can get it, and hit it early in the morning on Monday. But your team's been outstanding, and yes, treating them to lunch was a good token of appreciation, but it certainly doesn't show the amount of gratitude that we feel for your team, and I've told them when I've seen them, and I'll continue to do that, but we're grateful. We had people showing up in some of the worst of that weather. Some couldn't make it, and we supported that as well, but we had a lot of people who did battle just safely getting here to take care of our facilities, and you were one of those, so thank you.
Did I hear you say fun, snow removal?
The first time.
First time.
When I took this job, that was one of the things I was looking forward to, is the first snowstorm. And about 10 minutes in, I realized that probably wasn't the thing I was looking most forward to, so. But, you know, it's just part of it.
Well, our goal is always, our facility is not to be the reason we can't go to school. And certainly, there was challenges to that for a few days, and we knew that wasn't going to be possible, and it wouldn't be the facilities anyway, but by the time we were able to get back to school, they were ready.
Yeah, we were ready Friday, but obviously, the weather wasn't, so.
Yep, so, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell. And item 19 on our agenda brings us back to And item 19 on our agenda brings us back to patrons' statements. School patrons who wish to address the board may do so at this time. We will not discuss in open session any individual school student or school employee and/or descriptions of such people which leave little doubt as to the identity of these people. Dr. Goggins, Superintendent of Schools and myself will be available after the meeting to discuss any concerns expressed by patrons. So, the floor is open if we have any patron statements this evening. If you would step to the podium, the microphone is on. If you could introduce yourself and speak your piece.
Chris Richardson, and thank you for listening to me. I'll try to get through this as quick as I can and efficiently, but I've kind of thrown this together. But I'm here because of the appeal of a book, Ready Player One, in the high school. The review committee voted to keep it and so I've made an appeal. I've turned in the appeal documents that I'm sure you haven't looked at yet and that's fine. I don't expect any answers tonight, but I did want to show my face and talk to you face to face about it. I did forget to put my name at the bottom of the letter and I do apologize for that. I figured that out today, but if I need to redo that, let me know. I appreciate Mr. Veltouss and through this process, he's been kind and generous, even though we haven't always seen eye to eye. It's been a pleasurable experience, so just because we don't agree doesn't mean we can't get along because for me, this is not against people. This is the evil things of this world that are seeping in. That's what this is about. So, I want them to know it's not anything against anybody. Two, I'm not here for myself. I'm not here to be a menace to the school or the school board. The Lord put it on my heart to pursue this. It's not for me, it's for the kids of this district. He wouldn't let me walk away from it even if I wanted to. I couldn't turn a blind eye to what I knew was wrong, so that's why I'm here. Part of the issue is we've tolerated this to the point that it's become accepted and it's now the norm of what's getting in. So, to address the board tonight is really just to shed light on this and I'm the only one here, but I do know that there's other parents that asked, request that their kids not have that book. And I know in the past, there's been parents that have not liked it, but they, they made their choice, they don't want to come forward and that's their choice and I respect that. But for me, I had no choice. I had to do it. So, I'm kind of speaking on their behalf to stand up and let you know that there are parents out there that are concerned about this and it's an issue, but they don't want to cause waves, so they're taking the high road. My first time being at a school board meeting, I really didn't know what the school board was about, so I researched it. The primary function is to establish goals and standards for the school district, approve curriculum. So, I'm right at the place where I need to be. Standard of right and wrong, that's kind of where this comes in, you know? I've given you all the evidence, you can review it, but if our right and wrong is skewed and we don't have a baseline for right and wrong, then we're always going to make the wrong decision. You know, if I base it on what I think, I'm going to be wrong. You base it on what you think, you're going to be wrong. God should be the basis of our moral standard. We read the Pledge of Allegiance. There's a line in there that says, "One nation under God." You may remember Reagan gave a speech and he said, "If we ever forget that we're one nation under God, then we will be one nation gone under." So, it's important. Without God, we have no virtue, we have no moral compass, no conscience. So, with that being said, we're at a fork in the road where we have to make a decision. Do we continue down the wrong road that is comfortable or do we step out in faith and take the new road, the right road that leads to the standards and morals we want to set for our children, present and future? So, this is a big decision that I believe can impact the school in a mighty way if we're able to see past the mountain that stands in front of us. People told me when I was doing this, you're in front of a mountain and it's a lonely place to be, believe me. It's been long nights studying, researching that I really didn't want to do and it's time away from my kids and, but he wouldn't let me let it go. The only wrong decision is to keep doing what we are doing. We have to acknowledge that there's a problem. If we don't acknowledge there's a problem, then we can't fix it. So, I know, I know you guys know the significance of this decision, especially after you read through the stuff and go through what I've put down and I hope it don't offend anybody because it wasn't intended to do that. You guys are strong leaders, committed to improvement and to change and I know that and I've seen that and I've researched stuff and I see you guys out doing your thing and I appreciate that. But I want to leave you with one of my last statements and it's just, I ask that you thoroughly review the information, take your time and open your heart and your mind and let your moral compass lead you by faith to a proper decision that only he can lead us to, to be morally correct. And then the bitter truth of this is, I don't mean this in a bad way, is if you guys do make a decision, you're going to have to go against what's already been put down, what's already been voted against. And for me, that'd be a hard position to be in. So, you have a mountain in front of you that if you do decide, you have to make a tough decision because these are your people. So, I see that as tough, but I'll leave you with this last little story. And Noah's already heard it, but he's going to hear it again. I apologize, but it's the story of the starfish. And an old man is out walking on the beach and the starfish are covering the whole beach, thousands, and he's walking down and he sees a little boy coming and the little boy's throwing him back. And the old man approaches him laughing, saying, "What are you doing? Do you not see how many starfish are out here? There's no way you can make a difference." And the little boy bends down, picks one up, throws it, looks at him and says, "Made a difference for that one." So, that's what we have to do. We have to look past the mountain, look past what we see that could be insurmountable. It's going to be tough, but I think it's doable if we can do one little step at a time and do the next right thing. You know, I'm not perfect. I did the best I could and I did it for the kids, not for me. Believe me, this has been a tough road and a tough to even get in the building tonight. So, I appreciate it. Like I said, just thoroughly look at it and I thank you for your time. I went over, apologized for that, so I appreciate it. Thank you. And if there's any questions with what I have, feel free to contact me, even though I didn't leave my name, but Noah knows how to get ahold of me, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Richardson. I really appreciate you bringing your concerns to the schools first and then to the administrators and then to the board and all while maintaining an attitude of respect and courtesy and recognizing that having that difference of opinion doesn't mean that you have to be angry and that, you know, controlling anger and showing your heart towards the other party is very impactful. So, I appreciate the information you provided to the board and we've gotten that appeal packet in the book and certainly this board will diligently review that appeal and give it great consideration. So, thank you so much and for coming tonight. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Sorry, I went over.
You're okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll move on to board member statements. Quiet board, long meeting.
This was a really long meeting for my first meeting.
It was. We start with a marathon and the rest of them feel pretty swift. Well, again, thanks to the board for vote of confidence and placing me in the position of president again. Again, I'll do my best in the coming year to serve the community in this role and serve the board in this role and I expect great things from the board as we go forward. Congratulations to all the board members on being a part of this excellent group. If there's nothing else to come before this board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some moved.
Have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call for the vote.
Online voting is now open.
Got any girls' basketball scores?
No. Let's open it. Can't see any.
Mr. Ice, would you like to? All right. That's a yay from Mr. Ice. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, we are adjourned. This is...